All this meeting of the school district of Menominee area schools to order. We have the votes please.
Penny Berstow.
Here.
Toni Newsby.
Here.
Heather Smann.
Here.
Daniel Paulson.
Here.
Amy Rosson.
Here.
John Saboda.
Here.
David Steyer.
Here.
Jim Swanson.
Here.
And Tricia Thompson.
Here.
Okay, we have a call. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission statement, school district of Menominee area by embracing the needs and using the strengths of our diverse community is dedicated to preparing all students to become lifelong learners, caring individuals, and responsible citizens. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make in the agenda? If there are none, the agenda will proceed as follows. Recommendations and commendations.
All right, is Cassie Casey here? Okay. Cassie Casey, for her, the board of education of the school district of Menominee area recognizes Cassie Casey for her outstanding work as a parent educator at River Heights. Cassie works well with students, is dependable, and steps into classrooms when subs have not been available. So, thank you Cassie. And then Sarah Hirsch. Is Sarah here? Oh, okay. The board of education of the school district of Menominee area recognizes Sarah Hirsch for her outstanding work as a parent educator at River Heights. Sarah has taken on a leadership role developing materials to use with students to overcome each day's challenges with a smile. So, thank you ladies, if you'd like to hear that.
Mrs. Cold, could you take those please?
Sure.
And we had our QIC meetings canceled twice because of the weather. They may not have gotten the message because those were recommended by the QIC groups.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't aware of it, so.
If they would like to come back to a future meeting, you can always do it again.
Okay, I'll offer that.
Stacy Plumber, are you here?
She's not here.
She's here, okay.
The school, the board of education of the school district of Menominee area recognizes Stacy Plumber for her outstanding work as a social worker. Stacy goes out of her way to assist to any way she can and is a great connection between school and home in difficult situations, sees a great addition to our district. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, highlight on youth.
Is this a rescheduled highlight on youth also?
No.
No, the high school's been rescheduled, they'll come to our next meeting. Tonight, we're excited to have Downsville Elementary with us and to introduce them will be our principal, Mary Bagley.
We're excited to be here, so we have Olivia Murphy, our art teacher, and our fifth graders. You guys want to come up and they're going to share with you work that they're doing, the art and how they're collaborating with some community.
All right. All right, so as the segment said, I'm Mrs. Murphy. I'm a recent top graduate, first year teacher, and had an awesome time going between the high school, Downsville, and Nap Elementary. Due to the smaller amount of fifth graders at Downsville and Nap, I thought that this would be an awesome opportunity because of my knowledge of the area, and I know Tidings Cafe is very new to the area. I thought, and I had so many students who love cats and they've gotten their cats from the Humane Society. So I thought that it would be awesome to have fifth graders do a community-based project. I think that's very important as an artist to do something for the community. So for the project, I thought it would be awesome to let the fifth graders paint on a canvas because it's very rare that at that age they get the chance to do that. So all canvas, we're very cheap, it would be awesome. But each of the students got to choose a cat from the Humane Society that they wanted to paint and they got to change up the style a little bit, change up the background of course. Now let them go ahead and start, so Sean. Go ahead and choose your subject.
Well, my name is Sean and you will talk about the process. Well, we had to get paints and then we had to find out which colors mix to make certain colors. And then we started painting.
And then you guys have to.
We make our own style of animal and do it.
Yeah, and then one, you had the pictures of the cats kind of got to adopt. Which cats you wanted. And then move on to Tyler. Yeah, so Tyler's going to talk about, we had the Humane Society come into the school to talk to them about what they do.
Humane Society, I'm Tyler, the Humane Society, we did our school and taught us to build the cats for the Humane Society. And the Humane Society, and they've got a dog that they keep there because they have that cancer. So they just keep there because they're a little bit adopted dog.
And then we'll move on to Aiden, who will talk about what we're now doing with the paintings.
Hello, my name is Aiden and what we are doing is this Wednesday, we are going to pull up the paintings at Tidings Cafe and we are going to sell them for $10. And the money that we raise from it is either going to be used for food or toys for cats or we are going to donate it to the Humane Society.
And then.
Mary. My name is Mary and our contemporary faculty down at Napville have inspired some chapters. I wonder if we can do this thing, do our professors do this?
And then we are hoping to all go and donate at the same time, the tackling kits and toys plus just the money to the Humane Society.
After looking up, so Tidings Cafe.
After Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you. All right, that was great, I really enjoyed it, I appreciate working with the Humane Society. All right, now we move on to our student representative for local communications.
So as you probably know, I remember what's been struggling with schedules and canceled games and competitions and all snow days and that weather, but Boys Book had sectionals in students' point this weekend. They were able to advance three so much to the state meet this coming weekend. The Menominee dance team qualified for the state competition a few weeks ago and competed at state last weekend. They play seven in K in Nathan Tom, which is higher than their place in previous years. Boys hockey's about to finish out their season, they have their first playoff game tonight at home against the Bearin. Girls hockey will also have their first playoff game this Friday in Auburn against the Fusion. And the girls and boys basketball teams are finishing out their season strong and will begin playoff games in the coming weeks.
For closer curriculars, the state council grant program is up and running and they have approved many grants from multiple programs. Also, state council just submitted the spirit of excellence portfolio to be examined by the state committee. FCC LA's state officer, Danny Saboda, traveled to Madison last week to meet with representatives and discuss current issues. And then on February 12th, six FCC LA members will be competing in regional events, which will determine who will compete at the state conference in April. Science Olympian traveled to Michigan this past weekend to compete. They play second of 47 teams. Science Olympian has finals coming up in two weeks and state in five weeks where they hope to win and qualify for nationals. FBLA competed in the 2018-2019 regional competition on February 2nd. They were well represented with 12 students qualifying for state in April. And the National Ocean Science Bowl team competed in the Lake Sturgeon Bowl on February 2nd at UW Milwaukee. They are in third place, just missing the opportunity to attend nationals. They also won sportsmanship trophy, which is awesome because it is rarely awarded to a top four finisher.
The global education achievement certification, or GIAC group, is hosting the second annual world tour at the high school on Sunday, February 17th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. There will be different booths, activities, and booths from around the world and all are welcome to attend this interactive event.
The seniors are busy filling out local scholarship applications. There are lots of different scholarships available to MHS seniors that will be awarded in May. There's an orchestra concert tonight, which our orchestra department has been busy preparing for in the past weeks. In the past week, the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors have been busy filling out scheduling information for the 2019-2020 school year. Our juniors have been prepping for ACT, which will take next week on Wednesday, February 20th and Thursday, February 21st. There will be no school for freshmen, sophomores, and seniors on this day and there's no school next week. Are there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
The packet I just sent out was that Spirit of Excellence grant, Mary Ailer from the high school of mine. She was so impressed by the kids, she wanted to share that with all of you this evening.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, yeah. Okay, moving on, community communications. We did not get any, any sound.
I have one.
Oh, yeah, she wants to bring it up please?
Sure.
Thank you. Glenda, you want to? Glenda? You want, you're the only one?
Okay. I have a voice anyway. Glenda Jones from Menominee. And the reason I'm here tonight is my, myself, which is fine, you can say what you want about me, but my, my family in general has been quite a light and rod in Menominee for comments that I feel maybe are not appropriate or maybe things that we need to move on or heal from or move forward with. I know you've recently been talking and discussing an incident that took place with my son and I'm not here to talk about that tonight, but I just want you to know that a few weeks ago, a person that I had just met that day through a work exchange went online that evening and really drug me and my children through the mud, mentioning that they're black, that they're adopted, that I'm a single parent, and that my son was special needs, but quote, "a handful for everyone." All those things I agree with, except the person was doing it to really make a point that what I'm doing is not good parenting, not a good example in the community, and very hurtful again to my son, who happens to be a light and rod because he's black, special needs, autistic with these. I'm hoping tonight to just have, the only social media connection I have with this person happened to be Dan Paulson. And I don't know how this person knew so much about me and my life and yet so little at the same time. And Dan, I'm just asking you to tell us what you're doing to make this a safer place for all of us. The person had hundreds of anti-Semitic comments and posts, open public posts, and it was very concerning to me and to my friends and to other people. And we haven't heard any public, anything publicly from you and in a leadership position, I'd like you to say something. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. I know the person, because I took a course in Spanish course from him last fall and I was very, very upset with what he said and I went to him and I told him that I was very upset that he had crossed the line and I told him he needed to make an apology. And that's all I did, that's all I've done. I think he has done that, I'm not sure, he has now. Okay, well, I will, if I see him again, I will tell him very disappointed part of that. And I will try to, try to reiterate that I expect that to be done. Any other, do you have any other questions for me Glenda? Again, what he did was wrong, absolutely wrong, and I told him so.
I think you could have made a public announcement there. A lot of people that are even sitting here tonight were surprised you didn't publicly say anything, like you think this is wrong or anti-Semitism is wrong or racism is wrong. Just didn't happen, Dan, and I've been a supporter of yours, I'd like to, I'd like to see you come out strong on these issues.
I will, I will, I thought maybe, I think I told you what I'd have done. I sent you a message and said what I had done. So I will, I can do that because what he did was absolutely wrong and I disagreed with him. I actually stepfathered, went to see him face to face and told him so. So I can make that public, you know, statement, I can do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, community comments? Thank you, Glenda, for bringing that up. Okay, moving on. Revenue and expenditure reports for the month ending January.
Okay, if you'd like to pull up the January revenue report, this report is a revision to the original one that I had posted. I revised it this afternoon and I noticed the one that had been out there was incorrect. So this one is the latest version of that. If we take a look at our Fund 10 revenues, the total for, or through the month of January You'll notice we've had some tax revenue, property tax revenue come in. We'll have more now again in February, we'll receive our February payments next. Have had some equalization aid as well. If you take a look at the interest revenue, we're quite a bit over budget there. We're $37,286.39 over budget. Interest rates have been high and we have seen a big jump in our interest revenue, which is good news. They are, rates are expected now to kind of stabilize, level off, and maybe even go down a little bit, but we've seen some good revenues coming in there. Our Fund 11 gift account, so far year to date, we're at $122,948. I expect a large payment to be coming in from the Margaret Carbill Foundation this month. I believe that's $200,000 that we'll be receiving in for that grant. So that'll be a big donation there, or grant. And then Fund 27, special education, so we received it in $79,575.95. Does anyone have any questions on revenues? So then we'll move on to the expense by function report. For our general Fund 10, our year to date, we're at 38.97% compared to 38.46. So we're just slightly higher than we were the same time last year. In Fund 27, we're at 42.68% compared to 42.4%. And then in food service, Fund 50, we're slight, we're, we're higher there. We're at 49.18% compared to 45.87. Our expenses there are higher this year, but we've also been feeding quite a few more students this year. Participation has been up, so our revenue will reflect that as well. And then our expenses by object.
The second, I have a question. We got a report, one of the weekly reports, that we had to buy extra gas in order to heat the buildings during the cold spell. How is that as far as, how is that going to start our budget numbers and everything? Are we still on track there or are we going to be short?
I haven't seen that invoice yet, so I expect that will be coming in here in February, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we did have to, we were, we were, had to purchase some extra propane because of that.
Curtailment because of the cold weather, yes.
Naturally, so we had to.
Yeah, I know, it affected the budget and I understand it, but.
I have another question, on the food service fund, are we looking to have to move some funds into that to cover that? Or don't you know yet?
No, not at this time, I mean, our revenues are higher too because more students are eating. So we're not anticipating a transfer into Fund 50 to make up for that at this time.
Okay, great.
Okay, and then our expenses by object, now this is all funds, not just the general fund. So our year to date is 38.02% compared to 47.99%, which is quite a bit lower, but again, that's due to that refinancing we had last year. So that kind of threw last year's number higher, so it's not a real good comparison on this report because of that. If we look back to the prior year, we were at 39.47, so we're slightly under where we were in the previous years.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much. All right, moving on, board members, superintendent communications. Any board members have anything? Okay, all right, it's all yours.
Well, obviously, the weather is the topic of conversation over the last few weeks. It's certainly difficult to deal with, but people have been very flexible and supportive. I really appreciate the work of our principals and our staff. Teachers have done an amazing job. I know even my family, we've received some emails home about some sixth grade math practice activities. My son's been really excited to get those on the snow days. Again, we want to mention though that Menominee transportation has also been very good to work with. It hasn't been 100% smooth. We had a situation last week where we had a couple buses down by the Downsville area that ended up getting hung up with that real blast that we got, I think it was Tuesday afternoon. Really, we were predicted to get a couple inches and we ended up getting a couple inches but a half hour. But the bus company did a great job. We have reviewed our communication protocols. We want to make sure that if there is ever a situation like that, that the communication is a little more timely. Everyone is safe and that was the highest priority, but I think there were some communication issues that could have been improved upon, so we've already taken steps to do that. Lastly, I wanted to mention that the staff at River Heights has been very involved and active in participating in our principal search. As you know, Mrs. Cold is retiring at the end of the school year, so we've created a collaboration document and the staff have really highlighted some of the key attributes that they think are important for the next principal to have. This morning, we had a meeting with several of the staff members. We are going to have some staff members on the interview team. We're planning to have interviews on February 20th. We have several candidates already, so we're really excited about that. Posting closes on Friday, so we're well over 20 candidates and there's a lot of talented people. So we're very confident that we'll have some good options for next year's principal at River Heights.
Ready to move on?
When do we need to know if you want to go to that CISA?
I'm not sure if there was a due date on there or not, Jim. I know we can still sign up. Usually they take registrations up to, you know, a lead or two at a time.
I'm ready to be paid by March 19th.
There we go, oh, thanks David.
All right, moving on, monthly employment report.
Okay, this is a standard report, any questions upon board member review tonight?
All right, moving on. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Move to approve, David?
I'll second.
Yeah, many seconds.
Before the votes taken, I just want to follow up on the energy management policy. We had some nice discussion about that at our last meeting and Jim, you asked a question about the green schools, green healthy schools, ours, our middle school and our high school, like you mentioned, are, they do qualify for that and they are recognized. So we're having a meeting tomorrow, one of the items we're going to talk about is promoting that a little bit. I think there was a lot of promotion when the schools first qualify. And I know that some of our staff members and I know Mr. Munoz has a little icon on the bottom of his emails that shows that, but I think that's something we could probably promote a little bit better, so we're going to be talking about that tomorrow.
Okay, let's vote. Motion passes. Moving on, action to approve the personnel actions. Do we have a motion?
Some move. A second.
A second, okay.
Two seconds.
Any questions, this one? All right, let's vote. Motion passes. Okay, moving on, nothing in the action agenda, so we move on to the discussion items. A, discuss plans for making up canceled school days.
Okay, so instead of reading to you this entire plan, which continues to get more and more complex, I'm going to try to summarize it and then answer questions. The Department of Public Instruction has a minimum number of hourly instructional, instructional hours that we have to meet each year. And board policy says that we'll make up any time to make sure that we meet that minimum number of hours. And the age level that it impacts the most would be the seventh through 12th grade. The number of hours is the highest for that level of instruction. So in looking at it right now, Menominee High School is approximately 13 hours behind the minimum number of hours of instruction. Now, we do have extra hours built into our calendar every year. And in fact, the first two days that were canceled every year, it's been tradition that those are not made up by the students or the staff. Now, because we've had six days, we're to the point where we have to look at some makeup options. And what we're looking at would be making up one day of school on Monday, April 22nd, and then another day of school on Friday, June 7th, and that would be with the students and with the entire staff. Now, the teachers, based on their contract, the number of days we're contracted with our teachers, what we've typically done when we've had more than a couple days canceled, our teachers have something that's called fully professional development or self-directed professional development. And it's a really good way for us to differentiate our professional development opportunities for our teachers. All of our teachers have different needs and different interests and different desires for professional development. So what we've done in the past and what we'd like to do again this year is offer teachers the opportunity to have more hours of that self-directed professional development. So a combination of that, along with having an extra professional development opportunity in June, where we can review district data and still provide our teachers an opportunity to close out their classrooms, those would be ways that we would make up the lost teacher time. We do want to offer our teachers and our school year hourly employees the opportunity to take some emergency leave, paid leave, or personal leave in the event that they're not able to attend those or some of them already have a lot of professional development activities scheduled and they may not be interested in adding more, so we do plan to offer that option as well. But the planning is pretty complicated once you start talking about the hourly employees. and the pay periods, and that's all detailed in the written plan that we share with you, but this plan has been reviewed by the QIC groups, both the teacher QIC group and hourly QIC group, it's been reviewed by the district administrative team, and we'll review it again with the building leadership team tomorrow, but we think it's a pretty good plan. It does provide us a little flexibility, for instance, if we have another snow day like tomorrow, we feel that there's enough hours in this plan where not only would it come for tomorrow, but possibly even a few more late starts, or even maybe another day beyond that. So, that's kind of where we're at right now, are there any questions or comments about the makeup date plan?
Did you mention that you're gonna, did you mention that you're gonna lengthen the school day by some minutes?
Thank you, yes, that's, that's a big part of the plan, starting February eighteenth, so week from today, we'd be increasing the school day by ten minutes, five minutes at the beginning of the day and five minutes at the end of the day, and that would be for kindergarten through twelfth grade. Brian will be working with the 4K sites, their busing's a little bit different, and they have the option of going on some Fridays that they typically don't run, so 4K makeup may look a little bit different, but adding minutes to the school days where we built in some of that extra flexibility.
And you said it wouldn't affect bus schedules or anything?
Well, it'll, it'll impact the pickup times by five minutes and the drop-off times by five minutes, it should not have a large impact.
Yeah, how much instructional time do students average in a day? You said they're thirteen hours behind right now?
Brian, was it four hundred and ninety minutes or something?
Approximately.
Yeah, almost five hundred minutes.
It's twelve parking lots, seven, seven hundred hours.
There's about a twenty-line DPI spreadsheet that are printed, you're all.
The second question, has the governor ever, or the legislature ever said that, you know, due to winter weather and storms and like that, cut down the number of instructional hours needed for students?
Well, that, that's a good question, Dave, because in Minnesota, the governor did that, and waived those cold days that we had, and DPI sent us a communication already that said that in Wisconsin, the governor does not have that power, it would actually require a law change, and DPI said, don't count on it, just the way that, you know, the process would have to work to get that law changed. I did talk to Representative Stanshold, he was at the Menominee Chamber banquet last Wednesday, and I kind of asked him about it a little bit, I just don't think that that's something that would be included in this legislative session, so we're not counting on any flexibility. I know one of my first years of teaching, I was in Fulton City when the Mississippi River came up so high, and we lost a lot of school, and I actually spent a lot of time sandbathing, and even at that point, there was an emergency declared and everything, there was no flexibility granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, with this plan, all of our hourly employees who they don't go to work, they don't get paid, correct, will they be able to recruit some of those wages that they've lost, so they're not really sure what they're paying for the revenue?
Yes, this plan does allow for hourly employees, as well as our teachers, to take paid leave if they follow the protocol, and I know especially some of our hourly employees, it's a little bit tricky, because if they want to work and they want to push their scheduled days to June, that's okay, budget-wise, but for their paychecks, they're not settled, so we have to pay them for the work done in the paid period, and that's why we try to make it pretty clear for that group, that if the next paycheck is a priority for them, then they probably need to book us some paid leave instead of waiting until June to put those hours in. But yes, they, they can all be made whole if that's what their intention is.
Dave, is this, do the hours affect their graduating seniors at all, or is it not?
Well, that, that's always a tricky one there, because they do graduate a little bit early, they certainly won't be here June seventh when we make up that date, but they should be here on April twenty-second, and they should be here for those days where we have the extra ten minutes. But no, we're not looking to change the graduation.
It's, so you're just asking?
Yeah.
Any other questions? So, I take it then, like, at the high school, the periods would be extended like a minute or two, or so?
Well, the principals are working on that right now, because it's ten minutes, we don't have ten periods, it might not be exact, I know I talked to Mr. Bender today, and he was talking about adding a couple minutes to cares and then a minute each period, and so it, it might not be exact for each period, they, they want to make sure there's a plan that'll work well for the operation of the school.
Yeah, I imagine that's where the bell's gotta go, wait.
It's not going on lunchtime, because those are not instructional minutes, that one comes.
All right, thank you, moving on, review of staffing and course offering timeline.
So, this weather has really messed up a lot of our meetings and a lot of our ability to collaborate, but we're still moving forward, and we're having to create it and use some electronic communications, I think Brian, Tony, Sam and I, we've had, some of the principals, we've had a meeting scheduled with the music department, I think, three different times now, and it's supposed to be again tomorrow morning, but we've already postponed that, but what I'm trying to say is that we're really in the midst of planning our staffing for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, the list of ideas is the longest I've ever seen in my time here in Menominee, which is a great thing, we're having a lot of communication. At the same time, it's also going to require, I think, some real difficult decisions that we're going to have to make, and that the board's going to have to make as we get down into the spring. So, if you look at the timeline, this is a very similar timeline from what we've used in previous years, a lot of the upper-level staffing is really driven based on student requests and student enrollment at Menominee High School, that curriculum night, I think this is the second or third time they've scheduled that, that's going on tonight, and we're happy to get that in, because the ninth graders, that's where they get information about their classes, and then they'll be able to finally sign up. So, some of the data we're able to share might be a little bit more based on projection this year than it has been in the past, at the same time, freshmen don't have as many choices as some of the older students, so it's a little easier to predict how many sections of the different courses we'll need for the ninth graders next year. So, what we're doing is we're putting together a list of staffing options, we'll put it into a plan, we'll share with the board, not only recommendations, but we'll also share some of the other ideas, but I wanted to also provide the Board Members opportunities, if you have any things that you would like to make sure that we're studying as we get into the development of our staffing plan for next year. Anything from Board Members tonight?
Okay, moving on, discuss the district substitute employee in pilot program at MHS.
Go ahead, Sam, that'd be great.
So, I included a document that was put together, just to kind of give you a quick overview of how we recruit substitutes, and then the process for onboarding, and then I also included some data for the last three years, and I tried for the sixteen, seventeen school year, but we weren't able to get all of the breakdowns with that, so I'll keep track of this, and then if this is an annual report that comes forward, then after a couple of years, we'll have consistent data. But essentially, with regard to recruiting substitutes, we really rely heavily on our current pool that we have, and so July first of each kind of year, we have our substitutes, our current substitutes are sent a letter, actually, at the end of the school year, encouraging them to sign up again July first, and then there's a couple of other ways that you can see that we kind of, that we recruit our substitutes. With regard to onboarding some new substitutes, our current substitutes will need to go through bloodborne pathogen training, and then every five, that's done every year, and then every five years, they do mandatory reporting of abuse and neglect, and then they have to also go through some kind of local training, just to make sure that they're up to speed on Skyward, and so that's what our current subpool does. Anyone who's a new substitute will work through me to get a hiring packet, and you do a background check, which is done by a third-party vendor, and that's a nationwide screen to make sure that we don't have, that we're not bringing in somebody who has kind of assorted past. We, again, then they do the same type of training that our current substitutes do, and they have to have a TV test done, and then also a hiring packet, again, to make them employees of our district. We create a frontline account for them, so that they are able to go and obtain any jobs that are available, and then one of the new things, as of August first of this year, the DPI has done some different, different pieces with licensing, and to get some teachers into the classroom, substitute teachers into the classroom, as of August first, any substitute, anyone who wants to be a substitute teacher, needs to take a substitute training course if they are not licensed, if they have not completed an education program, or if they have an associate's degree. So, I've listed on here too what those, the requirements are, in order for someone to sub as a teacher to get a license through the DPI, and there are three different ways currently that people are able to do that training, there's one offered through CISA, and then there are two online options as well, so I work with our incoming substitute teachers to advise them, not advise them, but give them their options, I guess, as to what they can do to complete that training. With regard to supervising substitutes, when they enter the building, they check in at the front office, and given all of the necessary things that they need for the day, and they, they have the expectation that they work appropriately with students, they really are technically supervised by the building administrators, and if there is a problem, there's a process where the building administrator will talk with me, if I need to investigate, then I will investigate, but if I need to have a conversation with a substitute, if we need to terminate our relationship with a substitute, then we will certainly do that. In some extreme situations, we remove substitutes from the list, sometimes permanently, sometimes temporarily, and offer them the opportunity to do some additional training, typically, it's the nonviolent crisis intervention training, which helps people learn how to de-escalate situations, give some people some tools in working with other people. We are reviewing some training options with regard to classroom management, and Brian has shared some, some documents with me, and some things that we could mold together and kind of put in as part of the mandatory training that every substitute does, whether, regardless of whether they're a returning substitute or a new substitute, and so that's something that we're looking at implementing for the nineteen, twenty school year, as soon as we can kind of get that together. One of the things that we're also working on, a new idea, is with regard to the high school, and you can see the numbers and how, like, the number of total subs has decreased from last year to this year, pretty significantly, and then there's the breakdown as well for total subs, and then this year, we've put in the new hires, but one of the things that we're looking at doing is hiring a more permanent employee at the high school, this is a model that has been done by some other districts, and Mr. Munoz went and visited one of those districts to see how it works, it's a great advantage to have our one-on-one, so that teachers can communicate with their students through their Chromebooks and have some assignments, and so what it would look like is having a supervisory aide, hiring a full-time supervisory aide at the high school, and students that are in classrooms but would typically have a teacher sub, then would for that period go to, let's say, the commons or the tiered lecture hall, they would have assignments in front of them that they would be expected to work on from their teacher, and that would alleviate some of the, some of the pressure that we have on our subpool, and, and the idea is to get those subs to be able to move back then to like a middle school and elementary subpool and fill some of those vacancies, so, questions?
Is there a cap on how many kids, could, students could be in the cafeteria together because there's multiple absences with teachers?
We haven't really explored that quite yet, but it, it would be kind of at the discretion of, and I think also, if we needed to, we would, we would bring another staff member in to help support that supervisory, if we had an unusually large number, would be, I guess, my suggestion, but that isn't, that is something that, that we would need to talk through with Mr. Munoz, so he has that plan set.
As far as your training is concerned, it looks, it looks pretty good, like, my question now is, is that when they do the training, do they have to do all the training before they're actually able to sub in the classroom?
Yes.
Even the, like, learning how to be a sub and all of that?
That's for, that is for teachers sub, for anyone who wants to be a new teacher sub that doesn't have an education degree or associate's degree, so yes, they have to, they have to show me a certificate of completion, and then I sign off on a DPI form certifying that they, they have completed that training, so they do have to do all of that before they can get into the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Is that training online?
Two of the options are online, one is through WEAC Academy, and the others through study.org, and then one option is face-to-face, it's a two-day training at CISA.
Why is the clerical sub such a big difference at the bottom?
With regard to having more this year, I'm not, I guess I'm not really sure, we have, I think what we have is, we have subs that are willing to sub as teachers, as paras, and as clerical, it'll be, you know, more, they'll, they'll do more than just one group. I have noticed that too, that I think the clerical, for whatever reason, is appealing to some people, and, and unfortunately, that's one of the, I would say, least absent groups as a clerical, so we're not, not able to tap into that deep pool the way that we would need to with others.
Anyone else?
I was wondering about the e-horning, we're going to use that at the high school, what about at the middle school, is that a possibility at the middle school too?
Right now, we're just piloting it at the high school, Mr. Munoz has had a lot of discussions with his staff, the staff are encouraged and think it'll be a good fit, so we want to try it there first, and then at that point, discussions will need to occur with the middle school, and see if they're interested, see if they think it would be a good fit, but we do not have that intention this year.
Okay, all right, great, any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, moving on, districts, okay, discuss funding for youth services officer.
So, the last couple years, the Board's aware that part of the staffing plan has included a second youth service officer, and neither year did the city council approve funding at the same level that our current arrangement is, right now, there's a sixty-forty split for the youth service officer that serves our entire district, so we had included that in our staffing plan, and this year, we included it in the budget in Fund eighty, our community service fund, Leah and I have done a lot of investigation on that, and it is possible to fund your youth service officer out of the community service fund, as long as certain stipulations are met, and when we, when we review those stipulations, we feel that our current arrangement and the current use of our youth service officer is a community-based service, so what we're proposing is that instead of paying out of general fund, which is used for our instruction and so many of our classroom supplies, that we go ahead and move that position, the funding for that position, even in this budget year, into Fund eighty, by doing that, that would free up some Fund ten dollars, the, the general fund dollars that we could put more towards our classroom and our general operations. There is some work that needs to be done, Leah has done a really good job communicating with her auditors, we need to get a couple sign-offs yet before we have to approve it, I would anticipate either the next meeting or the, or the meeting in March, we would have that ready, but we do have an invoice from the city, the city administrator's been great, he said, don't rush on it, but we do need to pay that invoice, instead of paying it out of Fund ten and then having to journal entry it back this summer, we thought we'd go ahead and bring this forward to the Board, see if there's any questions or concerns, wrap up the paperwork, and then if everything goes as anticipated, we could get Board approval and then pay this out of Fund eighty, we do have the dollars available, and then it will free up Fund ten.
So, there's dollars available?
Yes.
Okay, is that going to make the tax levy change?
No, no, we already...
Or that the tax levy separate from the community as there is to the general?
Right, we already levy for those dollars this school year, it's already part of the levy.
And then the Fund eighty, because it can also assist with private schools, correct?
It's possible, that's one of the ways, but our community, our youth service officer right now is not strictly limited to the confines of our schools, not limited to the confines of our school hours, I, I don't know that she's doing a lot of service at the private schools, but certainly if there was an emergency or there were some sort of special activity, she would do that now, so it, it already really is community-based, she misses, not very often, but she does miss for certain investigations that are taking place, or going to court for some other things that aren't related to the school district, so there's a lot of examples, that could be one of them.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Did you see any downside to this?
The only downside that we've come up with is that in the event that we moved it to Fund 80, and there was a legal change where Fund 80 somehow went away, to put that position back into Fund 10, we probably, you know, how we define that position may need to be modified. We couldn't just simply shift it. At the same time, because we feel it qualifies for Fund 80, I don't know that it really should be in Fund 10 when you look at what's supposed to be in Fund 10. So there is a potential, I don't think Fund 80's going anywhere, Dave, but there is that potential that by doing this, we're kind of putting it in a certain bucket, and then to put it back in this other bucket, we would maybe need to redefine it a little bit. I don't anticipate that to be a problem.
I know, it was eye-opening for me at the state convention to talk to districts similar in size to us that had three or four times the size of Fund 80 compared to our district now. Some districts are using that a lot more for other things than our district is, so I don't see a problem.
One other item to go along with your question is, some of these rules are written into state statute as far as what's an allowable cost. And so if legislators were to change some of the parameters, we would have to take a look at that in the future.
And we've had to do that with other things that have gone back and forth. Some of the expenses for the pool field house, for instance, you'd used to be able to put some equipment expenses and possibly some shared expenses between Fund 80 and Fund 10, and that really got tightened up about four or five years ago. So there were several adjustments made then. Anytime you have to put something back into Fund 10, you know, for instance, many of our middle school-aged activities right now are community-based activities in the community service fund. I think that probably would be at more risk than a youth service officer. But if something like that evolves, and they said anything to do with any kind of student activity no longer qualifies, well, now all of a sudden, you got to find a way to put that back into Fund 10, or, and you couldn't even put it in under the same exact setup that you have currently. Those kinds of things can be challenging. But when I look at this money and I look at the opportunity to free up Fund 10, I think it makes sense for us to do it.
If there did come a challenge to Fund 80 and it was eliminated, where would that urgency, would it be legislature in the state, or is there another?
Well, ultimately, the legislature is the group that writes the laws. However, there are interpretations of that. DPI makes some interpretations, auditors make some interpretations. Sometimes a complaint could originate locally, which could lead to greater scrutiny. And I think that's probably what you saw last time Fund 80 was changed. I think there was enough concern at the local levels that the state then responded and tightened it up a little bit. And a lot of it has to do with what's going on in the tax world. You know, revenue limits have been frozen now for a few years, so, you know, when we did our mid-year budget hearing in January, you can see across the board, you know, tax rates are going down. You know, at a time when tax rates might have been a dollar higher for everybody, all of a sudden, Fund 80 probably got more attention than it has now. But we still watch every penny very closely, and especially when we're talking about taxpayer dollars.
Thank you.
I think it's a pretty creative and good solution to put more money in our classrooms.
I agree. Any other discussions? Thank you. All right, moving on, strategic planning update.
So we actually had a steering committee meeting scheduled for tonight, and due to a family emergency with our facilitator, that meeting was moved. That will now be held on March 4th. And it actually could be a blessing in disguise, because we did get the survey out. We're doing another round of surveys with our community. We want to make sure that the work that the steering committee has done is well-aligned, that we're interpreting and synthesizing that data correctly. So that survey's going out, the survey window, I believe it's open for about another week or so. And then Studer Education Group will be analyzing those results. And when the steering committee meets again on March 4th, really start to put the plan together. And Studer has promised us that they're still going to hit their deadlines, so we'll definitely have a plan for the board to look at this spring and have approved ready for next school year.
Dave, two.
How did, the letter that you sent out for the survey, how did you determine who was going to?
Right now, the letter has gone out only to every email address in our system. So the same system we use to cancel school or delay school or make any district-wide announcement has gone out that way. I am hoping to have a school crossings go out this week as well.
Okay, any social media you're going to put it out or anything like that?
Oh, yes. Now that we're canceling all these school days, I think the number of Facebook followers our district has, I think it's gone up by about 200 or 300 in the last few weeks. So, yeah, we'll definitely market that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Item F, review of items related to their next meeting dates, board committees and reports.
Dan, the February special school board meeting on February 25th. I mentioned earlier, the high school highlight on youth has been rescheduled a couple of times now. Usually, we do one highlight on youth each month. The high school is planning to come in on February 25th. And then that strategic planning meeting that I mentioned for the steering committee, that's on the list for March 4th.
So isn't the FA that's coming?
All right, any questions?
Dan, I think one more comment about the upcoming schedule. You all know that typically, we try to have mostly action occur at the regular meeting. I know we've talked a lot about that before. With the cancellations we've had, also in March, we only have one meeting because of spring break, so it is likely that you'll see some action recommended at the February 25th meeting as well.
All right, we will now move into a closer, yes, and a five-minute break, and then move into a closer.